...loaring, so I suppose 12B regarding mediation and arbitration matters. Anything else? All in favor of adopting the agenda as we've just amended it, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. Unanimous. How about item two, approval of the board meeting of December 13th and the board and budget committee workshop meeting of December 20th?
Approved.
Thank you.
Motion for Mr. Coolidge and a second for Mr. Wyman to approve the minutes of both meetings. Are there any errors or omissions in the minutes as they were prepared? None heard? All in favor of approval of the minutes as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. You guys have it. Item three is the town manager's report. I believe this will be an oral report.
Well, since I was on vacation for one week and had to stay home and quarantine the next week, I wasn't in the office a lot, so. However, I don't have a lot here, but they're all three pretty positive things. We've been awarded a grant for a new and updated local hazard mitigation plan. That's through the FEMA Building Resiliency Infrastructure Communities Program. I applied for that almost a year ago, so that's good when we get funding for doing our local hazard mitigation plan. Also been awarded a grant for the three properties on Newton Road that I applied for through Vermont Emergency Management Flood Resiliency Committee's fund for property buyouts. So we got that award last week, so we'll be moving forward with those three. And last, hired a new chief of police. David Kajinhan will be starting on January 11th. He's leaving his position as lieutenant in Swan, which he's held since 2017. And prior to that, he was a corporal on Montclair for 10 years. I was hoping to get him here tonight, but he's been in transition from, he's actually acting chief in Swan right now, was right now too, so hopefully the next meeting we'll have him here. I'll try to get him out of about town once he gets settled in and will meet much people, so. We're excited about that. And that's really all I have tonight.
Outstanding report, particularly considering you did it in absentia, basically. All of that stuff came as a result of a lot of hard work that you have done over the course of the year. And I'm appreciative of the role the select board has had in interviewing and meeting the new chief of police, David Kachian, and looking forward to meeting him again in official way and introducing him to the town and working with him to protect the folks in Brandon here. Are there any questions for the town manager regarding this report? Any questions from the public for the town manager, whether public attended by Zoom or here in the room? Any questions for the town manager? There's reported a couple of grants coming to Brandon and the new chief of police. Yes, sir. Bill Moore.
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to say kudos to the town manager and the select board for being expeditious in your hiring of the chief. I understand in other places it has not been that smooth, that efficient. There's some places that are going on two years of trying to look for a chief and we were able to find a fantastic candidate, so nice job.
Thank you, Bill. Any other public comment on the town manager's report or questions for the town manager? There's always time for public comment later in the meeting. Item four, is public comment and participation a dedicated form? So is there anything from the board that items on the agenda? Tim Giles?
Yeah, thanks, Dave, for sending out that ARPA funds final rule. I didn't get a chance to spend a whole bunch of time with it, but I got a little bit. And I stumbled onto a section that it looks like we could use ARPA money for, that I thought would be worth bringing up and having us become aware of it. And this has to do with affordable housing, brazen. There was one section, and I'll just read it, it's very brief. "We're allowed to use ARPA money for improvements to vacant and abandoned properties, including rehabilitation or maintenance, renovation, removal, and remediation of environmental contaminants, demolition or deconstruction, greening vacant lot cleanup, and conversion to affordable housing." And so I think the reason why I raised this is because I know there's some interest in trying to develop affordable housing in Brandon. And I just wanted to kind of get this on the radar spring as something we might consider as opportunities arise, because we haven't spoken for all of the ARPA money yet. So it's mostly informational.
Do you have a sense of, I'm just a little concerned about vacant or abandoned kind of thing, like I don't perceive us as having a lot of vacant or abandoned properties. I perceive us maybe as having some properties that are in disrepair, but they're still often, in many cases, occupied.
Well, that's interesting. I haven't done an exhaustive survey, but it's my hunch, maybe is a way to say it, that there's probably a few things that will qualify for this kind of thing. Places that we might be able to, you know, basically tear down and put back up and rehabilitate.
And did they, I didn't read that section in any detail. Would the town be kind of taking ownership and rehabilitating?
Yeah, I don't think it's, it's that, I haven't flushed out that much. To tell you the truth, I had this one paragraph, and it's, it just seems like it's with our interest in trying to have affordable housing that encourages people to stay in the state and is inexpensive and efficient. This is something that might work for ARPA money.
And did they point to like further resources to understand the full nature of it?
I didn't see.
Because that came from the league, right? I mean, the ARPA.
This actually is the one from.
Department of Church.
Yeah, this is the federal one. So I don't know how much of it it read, Tim, it is like 44 pages. And if you go down further, there's a little more detail on each program, which I found interesting with even like the water and sewer, it says we could actually use it for wells and stuff now too. I would think, and this is just looking at it this way, like in order for us to do any work on any property, we would have to somehow acquire it first. Which, I don't know, you know, that would be either through tax sale or estate. I'm thinking anything that's abandoned, like when we did the DIM property on Prospect Street, and we had to open an estate and go through that whole process to acquire it. I would bet that the feds would want us to be the legal owners of a property that we're sinking money into.
I would think so too. Yeah, I think the details are still in front of us, but this is one possible way to use that.
It is, I wish that, I mean, that is a good, if you guys kind of had the chance to read it, I know we just got it today and it was sent out, but it is very descriptive with even like, you know, what we've been talking about with fire district one and two merger, like that was in there saying about, you know, joining consolidation, joining things like that, so it was pretty good. So I think a lot of the questions that were raised through the Q and A through the year made it to this and they listened, so it's kind of nice.
Thank you, Jim. Anyone else on the board? Items that we don't have later on? Members of the public with concerns they'd like to address at this time? Bill Moore?
Yeah, and so it's funny you mentioned ARPA. Mr. Gav, I was, as you know, I'm the chair of the Autocue Communications Union District Board, and we just received a ruling from the Vermont Community Broadband Board about some allocation of broadband money and the anticipation potentially that towns would maybe look to request towns to match some of that funding. And just keep that in mind. I was looking, and just the back of the envelope thing looks like Brandon might be somewhere in the neighborhood of $56,000 that we're looking for for matching funds to go against some of the money that they're allocating. It just, it just came out, and I just keep that in the back of your head, minds. There'll be. Likely that there may or may not be requests from your Autocue Communication Union District for matching funds relative to money we get from the state around broadband as well.
And would you think, because we're about to adopt the budget, which we, for the year, that will start July 1st, which we crafted with some care with the budget committee over eight or so hours.
Oh, no, this will be just ARPA, ARPA funds only.
Well, budget from ARPA funds.
ARPA funds only, yes.
So you're asking for us to consider that as an ARPA use or as a partial use of the ARPA funds?
Yes, understanding that it's out there, like it's not official, but that's a possibility, that numbers are in around $56,000. From, you know, each town would have a match potentially that they'd be looking to access from ARPA funds, it looks like.
Thank you for that, Clark.
ARPA.
Other public comment? We have our state representative here tonight, Butch Shaw. Any excitement?
Well, thank you, thank you, Seth. To Bill's comment about ARPA funds, matching ARPA funds, we've learned this, whatever I learned this week, that we've never been able to use federal funds to match other federal funds. There's a federal law against that. And now we're learning that we can use ARPA funds to match other federal funds. And that's through some tenants in the ARPA legislation. As an example, the state's going to pay off three bonds for highway infrastructure in the tune of about $37 billion, using a combination of funds, among them, ARPA funds to pay off our debt over there as a match to the payment that we have to make to the bond bank. So there's a lot of swirling around with the use of ARPA funds, and as you said, Dave, 40 something pages that you've seen and the books that are finished, folks are seeing this day.
I would love to learn more on that. Maybe, like I said to Tim, I just kind of went through it quickly today and found, but that's interesting. I already got 12 ideas in my head of how we could do that.
I can lead you to the water on that one.
Okay, thank you. I'd appreciate it.
And then to the housing piece, we get the budget on Tuesday. Government's budget, and some of you may or may not have been interested in State and States, he teased us with some of the ways to spend some of the money in the budget and his budget addressed, communication union districts and broadband is one, housing is another, and we're interested to see what the details are on his affordable housing programs. And when we talk affordable, which is now rolling, it's affordable, it's workforce housing, I prefer it as workforce housing. And so we're anticipating that, and it's going to use a lot of federal funding that we have coming our way. And then, Mr. Chair, we get to you, you got to talk about town meeting.
Yeah, pretty shortly, yes.
Yeah, all weekly.
Thank you. Thank you, Butch. Anyone from Zoom with any public comments? Any remote attendees? Items not on the agenda tonight? Okay, we've always been have public comment at every point in the agenda, and it's fairly informal, so raise your hand anytime. Item five, appointment to a planning, to the planning commission for the remainder of a three-year term ending this coming June. There's a letter of interest from Jack Schneider, who is on the DRV currently and the Energy Committee. What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve Jack Schach for planning commission.
Second, motion for Mr. Coolidge and a second for Mr. Giles to appoint Jack Schneider to the planning commission to complete a three-year term ending June 30th, 2022. Any further discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor of the appointment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. That's unanimous. Thank you, Jack, for being willing. Item six, already is the town meeting discussion that Butch referred to. So Dave Afferson just recently, this evening, gave me S172. Does that ring a bell to Butch? But since Butch is here, do you want to introduce the concept?
I will, a little bit, you should read the legislation carefully, but as a quick overview, last year we passed a little called Act 60, which talked about mailing ballots and how to handle ballots and that type of thing for general elections and for town elections to the town, which also mail ballots to everybody. But, and that surprisingly did not sunset at the end of the emergency year, so that act is still in place on how we conduct elections and how you conduct your town meetings. However, there are some holes in that act that did go away. One of them is for you to be able to conduct an electronic pre-town meeting. With S172, once the governor signs that bill, you'll be able to conduct a, an electronic meeting. And you don't even, without, can't remember the exact term, but you don't have to tell people where you're having the meeting from.
Without a physical location.
Yeah, yes. So, thank you. However, to Fred tonight, that the Senate's working on another bill to clarify that a little bit as far as the open meeting laws, because they don't want, they really do not want one person conducting a meeting all alone in their bed or in the town office or someplace like that. So we'll probably see that bill by the end of the week in the House. And I suspect that will go through very quickly also. So unfortunately, we do, fortunately, we allow them to mail ballots to everybody. Unfortunately, we're not going to pay it for it. That would be on your dime, should you all choose the mail ballots to everybody. And it'll be up to you and as the governing body and working with the town clerk, how you're going to take, do that procedure. And that's what I was talking about in last year's bill. But unfortunately, there's no money for the town to try, but just.
Thank you, Butch. So I would perceive that we have at least three separate topics to talk about. We need to talk about whether we'll have the town meeting by Zoom or in person. We need to talk separately about if we're going to have it by Zoom, whether we'll designate a physical location for the meeting or not. Last year, we did not. Last year, we were all individually participating by Zoom. And then thirdly, we would want to have a discussion about are we going to mail ballots out at our expense to all voters or not? Are you ready to have a discussion on any of those topics tonight? Just to gain the sense of the board at this point? I think it'll be useful for simple mechanical terms, because the town report book is late in its production stages. I don't mean it's tardy, I just mean it's very far along in the production stages, and I think we need to continue moving it along and not getting behind and missing a statutory deadline to issue it. Right. So what's the pleasure of the board on any of those things?
I thought we'd already talked about mailing ballots. Are we revisiting that?
We talked about a conjunction with the school district, and I don't know if we have news as to whether all the towns, they did not, or we don't have those.
That would be a Sue question, yeah.
I remember we were going to do it in conjunction with the school district, but that was contingent on whether all the towns and the districts said yes.
I knew that was a school part. I guess I thought we'd already decided that you were going to mail out our ballots, and then if the school was going to do something in addition, that was going to be.
Is that the recollection of everybody?
I don't, I mean, I just, I know we talked about it, and we talked about it on the school.
We took two votes.
I may be mistaken, I, that's what I recall.
You may be right. We took two votes. One dealing with, do we do something with the school or not?
Right.
And one dealing with.
If we're going to mail ballots. And I remember we voted for the mailing of the ballots.
I think they both was three to two or something like that. Yeah. So does this change anything in that regard?
I'm happy to revisit the conversation. I still think it's a good idea to mail ballots, if you want to start with that part of the conversation. Is there other thoughts on mailing ballots?
Well, I almost feel like because we've now been told, so last year we did what in this bill is referred to as option B, which is an electronic meeting without designating a physical location to conduct a public informational hearing to, in advance of the annual meeting.
Right.
So because we didn't know at the time that we voted on mailing ballots, whether or not this was going to be an option, I would say that I feel that it's a little bit changed. The situation's changed, so I would like to address that first. My own view right now is that I think a remote town meeting is probably advisable.
I totally agree with you. The numbers are up to the roof, it's so sure.
I would also say that what we've heard from some people who attend by Zoom is that when the five of us meet with other folks in the room, it's not always 100% clear audio for people trying to hear what's going on. So I think last year, I didn't hear any complaints about the town meeting about audio quality, because there was just one person looking at one screen for the most part. And I feel like it was pretty good quality audio. So I would prefer that we, if, assuming the governor signs this and we have the authority, I would encourage us to think about having a Zoom town meeting the same way we did last year and not have a physical location designated for an in-person component. Other thoughts?
I like that.
Okay.
I'm going to move.
Yeah. Shall we vote on it?
Sure, probably, especially because you did.
So I would move that pending the governor's signature on S172, that Brandon holds a remote town meeting this year on, I think it's February 29th or something, isn't it? Some, I think we've got a leap year problem. Monday, February 28th. And that there be no physical location to attend, but only remote attendance.
I second that.
Discussion? Public comment on that idea of a remote town meeting, similar to how we had last year? We have the town moderator here. Was that cool? Was that fun? You want to do it again?
Sure.
If you felt it was so nice, you'd like to do it twice, that kind of thing?
Yeah, I think, I think it worked well.
We practiced it once. We probably maybe should practice it again.
I think the practice will help. I think people are hopefully at this point now, two years into the pandemic, are a little more familiar with online meetings and access, I mean, access shouldn't be a problem for folks. They have the ability to call in by way of a conference line as well, so.
Right, there was telephone access also, right?
Yes.
Any other public comment on that? Or Butch, yeah?
On, just reading the bill that's in the Senate now, that S222 will give you procedures for running that meeting. Not necessarily the running the meeting, but how to meet, the procedure on how to meet. It's, I'll just read this from the bill. The bill proposes to authorize temporary open meeting law procedures until it sunsets in January of '23. And it lets you hold electronic meetings without designating a physical location. And if there's a statute shortage, extend the timeline for posting of meetings, particularly. And post any meeting agenda or notice of special to designated electronic places and not necessarily physically like you're accustomed to here. And I suspect we'll see that, the Senate will act on it probably tomorrow, and we'll see it Thursday. So, yeah, this is, we're just trying to get, play catch up with, maybe we could, we all got caught by a surprise with this, with the variant we're dealing with now.
That's great clarity. Thank you for the update and the further info about what to expect as far as legislation goes for this kind of thing. Any other comment? If not ready to vote, all in favor of holding a Zoom town meeting on February 28th in the evening, the same way that we did last year? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. That's unanimous. Okay, so now having done that, did the town clerk's budget for, that we're about to adopt, did it contemplate mailing ballots? Does anybody recall whether Sue highlighted that or not? Or could Sue be consulted maybe between now and, at least between now and the next board meeting? We could ask her. I know that there was an increase on the election lines, but that was for election officers and the other associated expenses, because she was planning to have not one meeting as we did last year, but three because of the town meeting, the primary, and then the general election in November. So I think the lines that were like $1,500, the election workers line, which is on page 10 of the budget draft we're going to look at, the election workers line would go from $1,500 to $4,500, but there's a separate line for the elections themselves. The elections themselves is on page 11. She did move it from $1,800 to $8,300, which to me seems like more than tripling, so maybe that's including postage.
We also increased postage on the town admin one too, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I just, I just sent an electronic communication to town clerk.
You are the best.
Who confirmed, he said yes, that she had built into her budget mailing ballots.
Okay, so with that said, and with our previous vote, I don't feel like we need to take further action about mailing ballots unless someone on the board wants to.
I don't think necessarily. We can do absentee ballots and people can call in to have a ballot mailed. That's going to be quite wasteful to mail all the ballots out, and people are going to, they can get them otherwise. I don't think that's an expense we need to incur.
What's the cost to mail them?
Well, the line added in the budget moved from $1,800 to $8,300.
Right, that started July 1st of 2022. What about the whole truth, better truth?
So this would be in this year's.
That would be from November.
This would be in the budget that's open. In the budget that's open, there's only the $1,800 on that line and this, the $1,500 for election workers.
It's not breaking the bank when we do bulk mailings.
What's that going to say?
Six or seven hundred bucks, maybe, I think is what it costs when we do bulk mailing, so.
And do we only pay the return postage if it actually gets used, or do we pay it through a meter at the time we send it out? Do you know what I'm saying? Like, we send them a return envelope, I think.
I believe it's been prepaid.
Meaning?
You get a stamped envelope, do me a look back here.
So we're paying the postage for the return.
We're paying the postage both ways.
Well, if Sue's, if Sue's word to Bill is that she had contemplated doing that, then I would say it's covered in her budget for the year that's open, as I call it. Like, this isn't, it's an excellent point by Jan. Like, the budget we're about to adopt isn't going to cover this town meeting. The budget that we're sitting in right now covers this town meeting. I can text her.
Well, and I wanted to take the chance to, Brian, I appreciate your concern, because I'm certainly all for keeping efficient, not wasting money. But I think what I would offer is that it seems like more people participate if they get a ballot in the mail. And I'm also wondering, from Sue's perspective, if it isn't easier just to do them all instead of having to request, you know, it drips and drabs. And so those might be two things that, you know, might be useful in this conversation.
Yeah, that'd be good info to ask Sue to either get to us in the form of a memo or to come to the next meeting and talk about it. Or will it be past the time? Well, it can't be really past the time, because the petitions don't even, the petitions don't do it today.
The warning is that we're going to be confirming in the next meeting. And that's what has to hit the book and literally go to print the next morning.
Right.
And so, you know, we could wait another meeting, because this information's going to be in the book of whether we're mailing.
Right.
It seems like a good idea to make this decision tonight.
So you're thinking about not having anyone vote in person here on the day after town meeting?
Well, I think you have to.
I think you have to opt to vote in person. To bring your ballot in or whatever.
I don't think we were, I don't think that was the case, no. Last year, you could vote, you could bring your ballot to the town clerk ahead of the meeting. You could mail it back, or you could vote on election day in person in the town office. In the town office? No?
No, no, no.
At least we didn't leave it. No, we didn't leave it.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Those, and this year we're assuming it will be the same?
But.
Yeah.
My only problem with mailing ballots, we had two different individuals who showed you four different ballots with the people that had been deceased. And they got mailed. They could have filled them in and sent that back in.
You will come.
What's that?
You will come. It'll take a while.
How long they got ballots in?
They'll get a ballot, but there're only one person, so if you got, if you got four ballots for Tracy, why?
Yeah.
Right? You can only vote once.
Right, but if.
They were four separate deceased.
They were, these were, these were, there were four separate ballots. They were John Smith, Jean Doll.
Yeah, yeah.
And they were set, and they were people that had, they were people that had been deceased. And they got those ballots. There was four different individuals.
But Tracy, you don't know if they were on a checklist or not. If they weren't on the checklist, they can't vote.
You mailed them.
Yeah, but they mailed them, so they have got two different, there's another checklist.
There's statewide checklist and then the more accurate checklist is the checklist that your BCA prepares in this town. That's the more accurate.
Okay.
That's the more accurate checklist.
So last year was the state checklist the one that was used to mail the ballots? Because the state was funding it.
Secretary of State mailed ballots during the general.
They were part of.
That's probably.
During the general election.
And I told, I told the individual, there were two separate individuals. And I, they cared for these, they cared for these people before they passed away. And I, I don't know if they ever brought them back to Sue or not. I told them the best thing to do would be to take it back to Sue and to bring it up there. And if they did that or not, I do not know.
But if the town sent it this year, right, that should be, it sounds like from what, Butch is a longtime member of Forest Civil Authority in Pittsburgh. So it sounds like if the town is sending them from the town's checklist, it would be less likely to happen, perhaps?
Because I know Sue, once a year, goes through and really combs through to try to defer that. And while there may be a mistake, I find it hard to believe that she would have that many because she's really diligent about it.
Well, I mean, if it was sent through on a state.
The state, it might be different.
It could be different.
Anything else to be said on that? Yes, Neil?
If we have eight ballots being sent out to people who are deceased, there's somebody decided to use them, I don't think it would change the overall election by very much. I mean, it's, it's, it's nice that we have a hundred percent legal election, but I don't think that these numbers indicate that there's going to be like any kind of wholesale fraud or people voting out of the state and doing it over and over again. I don't think it would change the.
Is anyone waiting up there?
I do want to let them in.
Because Sue said she's trying to call on.
There's nobody waiting.
She might be trying to get. Bill, did you have something else?
Oh, I was just going to pile on to Representative Shaw's point, you know, that the checklist, you know, as those come back in, our voter checklist is, the BCA goes through that. It's not every year, it's, if it's not every year, it's every other year. But I mean, recently we've been going, going through it pretty regularly and it's challenging. So those votes coming in aren't going to be counted if they're from somebody that's deceased. That's not on our checklist.
We also got to realize that the school doesn't mail their ballots out. People are going to have to call or vote absentee coming in anyway, so.
Yeah, there is that whole, we were trying to avoid an inconsistency between the town and the school in that people would have to do exactly that, basically vote in two different processes.
Right. She's on there.
But you have two, you have two weeks to iron out those differences.
Yeah, right, so we don't have to do anything tonight. We should try hard to find out what the school, what the towns and the school districts have all settled upon. They must by now have settled upon something, right? So that we know. We do have Sue Gay, she's connecting to audio, it says, which is great. And she's muted. Tim, do you want to unmute Sue?
She is unmuted.
Or she's muted herself?
Yeah. I can ask her to unmute.
Your fan on the air, Tom?
I know.
Hello, Sue. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Yeah, so I'm a little behind the, behind, so what's up? What's going on?
We're trying to figure out a few things about voting by mail and so forth for this year's town meeting.
Yeah.
Do you have an update about whether the other towns in the school district have all decided one way or the other about mailing ballots to all voters?
The other towns are not, not all of them are mailing ballots. I don't know exactly who is. I've been trying to face the folks, but the smaller towns are definitely not mailing ballots. So that makes the school cannot mail ballots.
So if people want to vote in the school's budget or the school director's election, what will their process be?
Well, I'm going to put an insert in with our ballots that the school is not paying for that says, "You're not getting your school ballots. You will need, if you want it by mail, you'll have to request it." I'm also going to do, I'm trying to communicate that with people with maybe a Facebook video or something, explaining it to people and showing them how to process their mailing ballots. But yeah, they're going to have to request those separately or vote or come in to vote on the school ballots.
So from your point of view as the chief election officer, because we had previously voted to mail a ballot to every voter, is that going to be more complicated this year because of the school not being able to mail a ballot to every voter? And would it be more efficient for the election process if we chose not to mail a ballot to every voter this year, but everybody followed the same rule for the town and the school in terms of voting absentee?
Well, I think it's better to be mailing ballots personally. I mean, it's always complicated with the school ballots because they're, oh, they go for the other towns. So there's always complication with that, and I think.
But that's counted?
Right. Right, I mean, you have to get a separate list for the school, so we have two checklists anyway. Does it add? I mean, I don't know, not really. You just deal with it. I don't care one way or the other. I've sort of made, because you made that vote early on, I've made some moves in that direction by the number of envelopes I order, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Because I have to do that in December. So, I mean, that decision caused me to make a few decisions earlier on about it.
But I think that decision was made with the idea that we knew the school had to be kind of done unanimously by the towns, right?
That was the school part.
We knew that the school, that the school, they could only mail the school ballots if all the towns agreed to do that, yes.
Right.
So just so you guys know, on October 25th, the meeting, that's when you guys made the motions. There's two separate motions. There's one to approve the mailing of local election ballots to all active registered boards of Brandon. The motion passed three to. And then there was another motion that said to approve the mailing of ballots to all school district voters with the understanding that all towns agree. So we know that hasn't happened. So there was a, there was a motion to already, like Sue said, to move forward with sending out town ballots.
It's like we're making it more.
I was communicating that, and so I changed the wording on the paperwork I sent to the voters and saying that they would be receiving a ballot now. And I also included on our website a page of voter information. Come in.
Other board comment or public comment on this matter?
I think that we voted on it to do it. I don't even know what I think we need to carry through with. I don't think we can, if we're, if we're held a town, a virtual town meeting, we can't expect people, everybody to come out in person to do their voting. I guess.
I think it was more like the method of asking for an absentee. They can still vote absentee with no, with no reason. You know, they would just take a step rather than be passively sent the ballot, right? I understand what you're both saying.
How scary.
Other public comment? Yeah, Jan?
How scary. How many people are going to vote for the school budget if they have to come in here? Or they have to call to get a ballot? You call for this one, but you don't for this one?
I have to say, I find it disappointing that the school ballot cannot be mailed. And I find that that is going to depress their turnout.
Mr. Chair, I think, again, like, we've had these conversations before with, you know, we, we don't have any control or authority over how the school does their voting. And we're, we've got to be more concerned about the Brandon voters on our, on our, our voting for local. I think, you know, the motion was made back in October to move forward mailing the ballots. I think we need to stick to it, and whatever the school decides, the school decides. And if Sue's already started the process of mailing ballots because of a motion that was made, I think that needs to be honored.
Other comments from the public, either by Zoom or in person?
You've rescinded motions before and put a new motion on the floor before. Why would this be any different?
Bill?
I agree with Slukka Markowski's view of that. I mean, we're sending mixed messages, I guess, and the fact that we decided that it's too dangerous or not, or it's too risky for us to hold an in-person meeting or even a half or potentially a physical location for people to attend if they wanted to. We said, "No, you will attend digitally because that is the way it's supposed to happen." This seems a way to provide access to the greatest amount of people by mailing our own ballot, independent of, again, what the school district does that we have no control over whatsoever. That's not within our purview. They're separate municipality. We don't have the ability to dictate to them what they can do and what they can't do. But we can control what happens at Brandon.
But we do administer their election.
Unfortunately.
Sue, do you have this like round figure ballpark top of your head? What does it cost in postage for us to mail a ballot to each Brandon voter? And/or do we pay for the return ballot postage also regardless of whether they return it?
Generally, yes. Hold on a minute, I can, if I can find. I actually printed a report, which should have helped. So it's probably about, I think I budgeted $6,000 to mail town meeting ballots.
And when you say budgeted $6,000, like in the current open year's budget, there's $6,000?
No, next year's budget, because as you know, we're always doing the budget way, way, way at a time.
Right, so what are we doing? How are we spending, how are we paying for this year's mailing?
Well, it'll have to come out of my, hopefully, another line item that I have to understand. It's not in the budget for this year. So a year ago, we were doing this year's budget. That was not in the mix.
I'm sure we paid $6,000.
But you're anticipating $6,000, give or take, is the cost to the town to do this?
Yeah, I mean, that was about maybe $50,000, it's between $5,000 and $6,000.
Between $5,000 and $6,000.
So she had said before also that the, the school is paying for the insert in the ballot to be mailed out. Are they also paying that one-way postage to get that mail out? Or not believe us, but is the return?
Well, we haven't worked out everything yet because it's still early on. But I did talk to Jean and Brenda and Melinda and maybe early December. And the thought was to inform people that if they wanted the school ballot, that they, that if they put some sort of an insert in there or a postcard possibly, that people could just mail the postcards back requesting ballots. And they would pay for all that postage and the rest.
Well, she's saying there will be a postcard put in that the school district would pay for.
Right.
We'd still pay for the, to send it out.
So would we be getting any postage for the initial mailing from the school to mail out their insert?
Um, we could wait and see. I don't know if it would change the postage of just, I don't know. We'd have to look at it and see. I could have to make print your guy.
Is there any way for the ballot to go up with the town report? Because we're already mailing out the town reports.
Say that one more time.
Is there any way for the ballot to be mailed out in the town report? Because we're already mailing out the town reports.
Well, the town reports don't go to all the voters. No, we can't do that. We have to, I have to, when we mail the ballots, I have to mark all, all of the voters as having then sent a, an absentee ballot, basically. There's a, there's a, there's a whole software piece behind all of this too.
I think the vote only goes once two weeks household. You're right. I mean, that's the thing.
That's, that's a goal, yeah. Not full group, but yeah, that's the intent.
Okay. Other comments? Other input? So the way that it works to reconsider a motion is you have to have been on the prevailing side of the motion to offer a motion to reconsider. So if somebody who voted to mail all the town voters' town ballots on October 25th wants to rescind that motion, this is an opportunity to do that. And you have to have been on the prevailing side of that question. I, I won't be offering the motion, that motion.
And I know I was on the prevailing side and I won't be offering that motion.
I think you were the third.
But I was the third. I'm not going to change.
All right, so we're going to stick with the course that we voted upon on October 25th. I think in light of the town clerk's already, already having taken steps in that direction and voters being informed in a, in an official way that they were going to be mailed ballots. And so now they will be mailed ballots. And as others have said, there'll be an insert in the ballot advising voters that their town ballot is enclosed, but if they want a ballot for the school election, they need to request it from the school. Well, no, they request it still from the town clerk, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, my idea is to just have it be a postcard. I could just say, "Send me an absentee ballot from the school."
Very good.
And that works wonderfully, actually.
Thank you, Sue. Thanks for joining us to help us through that. There was a lot of technical stuff that we didn't have at our fingertips.
Sure.
Any further public comment after the vote now or after the ending of it? Okay. How about adopting the fiscal year 2022 to 2023 budget as it was arrived at during the budget workshops with the Budget Advisory Committee? We've got the budget. To make sure that we all have the same version of the budget, it has up in the upper left corner, a time and date stamp of January 7th, 1:04 PM. Yep. And the bottom line on page 21 is a budget with expenditures of $3,230,130. Yep. And the town manager and I have both kind of double-checked each other to calculate the amount to be raised by taxes, which is the expenditures minus the revenues. And the amount to be raised by taxes would be $2,712,274. I would note two things. The percentages, for those who enjoy comparing previous budgets, the total expenditures are down 0.42%. The amount to be raised by taxes is down 1.2%. And the town, to this point, I think, is at consensus or the board is at consensus that we will not be requesting a separate paving article. So that's $100,000 of taxes that was raised last year that the town, the board is not asking to be raised this year. So what's the pleasure of the board regarding the budget, as I've just given the bottom line details?
I hope that we accept the budget as presented.
Start here. Motion and a second, there's a discussion. We have two members, at least just two, of the Budget Committee who are here tonight. I want to thank Jan Coolidge, who has been a member of the Budget Committee, I think since its inception a number of years ago.
2014.
2014, excellent. And Neil Silins, who gave his first year of service on the Budget Committee for this year. We also had on the Budget Advisory Committee Peter Werner and Doug Bailey, and the fifth person, who had Carol this year.
Barry Garia.
Barry Garia, right, who has done it for a few years with us. So I, I know that the Select Board really does appreciate the Budget Advisory Committee all attending these workshop meetings. We do have some limited public participation from time to time. We've certainly got the department heads come in sometimes. Dave is always there, the town manager. And we have some members of the public come in and examine various portions of it. The town clerk came in to explain her department and so forth. So I think everybody who participated in the process, it was useful. And I think that it's, it's an achievement in a time of inflation and in a time when we do have contractual obligations to our employees to give increases. I think it's an achievement to have come in with a budget that recognizes that the taxpayers are, in many cases, going to appreciate a little bit less spending and a little bit less to be raised by taxes, and trying to provide still the services that the town requires. Any other comments about the budget as we formed it? Okay. If not, all in favor of proposing a budget as was just stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Excellent. Number eight. Okay. So shortly before Christmas, the board got an email from some folks on Wood Lane to the effect that they were assuming that the noise ordinance would be on the next ballot and recalling that that was the decision some time ago by the Select Board. I did do a little bit of just refresher. The board did have a couple of dedicated hearings last spring, public hearings which were well-attended. And the most recent activity from the board was on April 12, 12, 2021. At that time, the minutes of the meeting state that there was a motion that passed by a vote of four to one to maintain the current course and rely on the existing state statutes regarding noise. I then told the person who was writing that that's all the board committed to do in a definite way. The following line in the minutes says that it was suggested that it could be placed on the town ballot next year. And my recollection, just personally, is that that's kind of where the newspaper decided to emphasize the story, was that we were gonna all have a town vote next year. So what I, what I told these folks over on Wood Lane I would do is what I'm gonna do right now. I'm gonna propose that the board add a non-binding advisory article for public vote that says, are you in favor of the Select Board drafting a noise ordinance for the town in Brandon? Now, since I gave that response to the folks on Wood Lane, the town manager did get some more information from the league of cities towns, which I appreciate. Thank you for getting their view on it. And their view on it, um, let me just find that quickly, sorry. Oh, right, you sent it to the whole board. Right, thank you for doing that. So one of the things they proposed that we could do, instead of a town vote, is to hold one or more special Select Board meetings that are for the purpose of getting feedback specifically regarding an ordinance possibility. And we did that to some great extent, I have to say. Like, that, that box has been checked off. Their recommendation, it says, if the board really wants to, I recommend that the issue be put at the end of the town meeting warning under other non-binding business for discussion purposes only. I don't really think that that's probably a good fit for Brandon because we are, first of all, gonna have a Zoom meeting, and we've already had, in effect, Zoom meetings about noise ordinances with great participation. Even though it would be not binding on the Select Board, but what? So Dave had, Dave, I think you passed the idea past them about a survey, right? Or not?
No, so
Did it say anything about surveys?
The survey was something that you guys did last April. Was the letters and emails that came?
So the VLCT, the final comment is, no town discussion is required as non-binding business at the town meeting. The law allows voters to petition to rescind any ordinance the Select Board adopts if petitioned within 44 days. So what I was telling the folks on Wood Lane is that we would not be putting a noise ordinance before the voters anyway. That's not how it works. That's not how the adoption process works per the law. You can't do that. The way the adoption process works is the board would adopt an ordinance, and then the voters could petition to have a vote of the town to rescind the ordinance that the Select Board adopts. It's kind of a backwards way that I think is designed to give the Select Board some deference in the process. Now, we've gone through the hearings and so forth. My sense, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that there was not, at that time in April, appetite on the board to draft an ordinance.
Right.
That's why we voted.
It was a four to one vote, right? So, um, I don't know whether this non-binding advisory question is, I mean, the league never told us really whether it was, in fact, lawful or not to do this, even though that was our question.
Would be non-binding.
It would be non-binding. You can ask a non-binding question.
It's a whole. It, it seems like, since it would be almost no cost, you're talking about just adding a line of print to an already-existing ballot, that it would be an interesting thing to know of what the town, on a larger scale.
Thanks.
And so it seems like a harmless thing to do that you proposed for the Wood Lane people.
So we work on small board rules. So I didn't make a motion yet, and you didn't make a second because there wasn't a motion. I made a proposal, but we can still discuss.
Would you like a motion on the table?
Not yet. I'm kind of hoping for some more discussion.
Yes.
So is there public input or board input as to, or town manager input? Bill Moore?
Town moderator.
Town moderator. What's an opinion right now, so I can, I don't worry about my moderation. I feel like putting out a question that's non-binding like that is almost like saying, do you hate noise? You know, that invariably you're gonna come up, I think, maybe with opening, opening up another can of worms in that you might get a push from the, yeah, we, we, you don't like noise, we need to do something about it. I, I don't know, I just, it seems.
You think it's too, too general?
I think it's too general, I mean, you know, I, I, yeah. I guess it gets back to the point where we had hearings a year ago, or not even a year ago, talking about this. You guys voted four to one to say, nah, this, this is a can of worms we don't necessarily want to get into because how do you police, the questions about policing and enforcement, you know, you know, how do we measure, you know, all these things. He just said that maybe that's something that kind of Brandon wouldn't want. But I, I don't know, I just feel like it's sort of settled, but, you know, again, my own personal opinion.
Dave? I, I think that we've gone through this process, you know, it was like three months last year with, with hearings and, you know, discussions on, like I said earlier, the letters that the folks wrote. We had both sides, you know, of the thing, and the board did make the decision, four to one, not to do it. It's kind of like the last topic we just had, that there was already a decision made by the board. I think we need to honor the decision that's been made before. And, I mean, as you know, there's other, there are other issues with that certain area that aren't noise ordinance-related, they're more zoning-related, or maybe state junkyard ruling-related that probably have more grounds for, for the town to pursue. Which our zoning administrator has been. It's just, again, the process is not quick enough for some of the folks that live on the, on the street, so. I don't think a noise ordinance would change some of the things that are kind of ticking the neighbors off, but some of it doesn't make noise that they're disgusted with.
Neil?
I think the town already has a noise ordinance for new construction with specific decibel values for residential and commercial properties. And I don't think it would be unreasonable to just extend those new constructions to existing construction. And you don't have to entertain philosophical discussions about what's noise and what's not noise, and et cetera, et cetera.
So just to focus this discussion a little bit more, I think, I look, I think that it's not the desire of me to restart the noise discussion, the noise hearing ordinance discussion. It's, it's to focus on the question of, is the public owed an input moment in an official kind of town-wide ballot? Like, that's kind of where I'm coming from. And I'm coming from it from the point of view of there are clearly people who are intelligent and pay attention and participate in the process who felt like the minutes of the board meeting said they were gonna get a vote at the next town election. And I'm trying to kind of determine whether that's true. And if it's not true, whether we should kind of affirm the sentiment anyway, or if it's not true, whether we should correct the sentiment and let people know that, in fact, no, the board did not say that we were going to put this out on the town ballot next year. We talked about it as possible. Tim?
Yeah. So I, I think the first thing I would suggest is that this is a non-binding, so none of this commits us to do anything. It really just allows us to find out some information. It, it seems like, you know, the wisdom of the board at the time was that the majority of the town didn't want a noise ordinance. And if, in fact, that's true, this question might, in fact, verify it. And, and in fact, it, it might verify it by a large margin. But what's interesting is if, you know, all the people had a chance to have something to say, and actually came up with something different, that might change the conversation. You know, I, I'm not sure what it would do, because we'd still have to pass, we'd still have to do something that the board agreed with. And obviously, it's the board's judgment. But, but I, I think it's, it's the benefit of the question on a ballot that's, that's properly worded, because I certainly would want it to be carefully worded, so it wasn't just haphazard, is, is that we can get past this, this idea that it's one person on the street who has a complaint about some noise in front of their house, and we can start to get at the larger sentiment, which is, is really the benefit of this kind of larger sample. Because even though we did have some participation, when you think of the number of the people in our town, the participation was relatively small.
Just because they rely on the five of you guys to make that decision.
It's true.
And that's why they felt that it was in good hands. And that, that has come to me more often recently than it ever has, that they're relying on you guys to make that decision so that they don't have to. And I think the decision was already made.
Jay?
I don't think that since we passed, or since we decided not to have a noise ordinance, that we've had. The only complaints that I really know of is what you've just read off on the Wood Lane since this has all taken place. So I don't really see a reason to have it. Am I?
Well, so
I, I mean, I, I don't see a reason to have it on the ballot because we haven't had
I think without one of the details on, on the
And I, and I know, and I know the topic that you're talking about, and I know where that complaint's coming from. And I agree that it's not a noise.
See, you know, the amount of, well, junk cars that are there don't make noise.
Right.
You know, that's 90% of the problem. So a noise ordinance wouldn't even correct it. I mean, that's the thing, of looking at the big picture. There's, you know, there's other ways to go around it. But again, it's like, it's not happening overnight. As we know, the process is long and slow, like second grade, you know? And like, it's, that's how it's gotta be dealt with. But I, I don't see where a noise ordinance is gonna change anything.
Yeah, I, I'm not talking about a specific, I'm totally talking about the general sentiment that we don't really know.
I think we do. I think you guys pulled it last March and April, you got the answer.
Well, then this would just confirm it, then. I mean, isn't that the truth? That if, in fact, everybody agrees that that's the case, it would just be a, a nice outcome that would confirm what you know.
Neil?
I think the discussion around the noise ordinance last year was very emotional, led by a couple of very highly-charged people on both sides. And I think that influenced the discussion very much. And I think it would be worthwhile to, now that that heated emotional state has kind of calmed down, at least as far as I'm aware, just pull the community. And as long as it's non-binding, I mean, what are you held to? So it's, it's, it's kind of a win-win situation, I think.
Depends on how it's worded.
Right, okay. I just, so the way that I thought it would be worded was designed to give the board, basically, a direction, but not instructions about what the noise ordinance should include. So the question, the way I wrote it was, people would be asked on the ballot, are you in favor of the Select Board drafting a noise ordinance for the town of Brandon? But then I got some vibe tonight that that's too vague and it's gonna get the wrong. So those who feel it's too vague, you got any suggestions? Well, I'm seeing nodding heads, and that's okay.
They need to be more specific on what you consider noise is, or what the noise level is.
Well, but it's, it's a, it's a yes or no question. Like, that's all we can do, is a yes or no question.
But, excuse me, I think we need to specify what we're talking about with noise.
Exactly.
I mean, are we talking about the decibel level?
I disagree with you, because we're not drafting an ordinance by public referendum. We're finding out if there's appetite for an ordinance at all.
But, but in order to find out if there's an ordinance, we have to know what, or we have to let people know what the ordinance is? What does that relate to?
Well, if, if you're gonna let people know what the ordinance is, the board's already determined that the ordinance is whatever the state statute says it is in Brandon. That's what the board wants. This is asking, do you want more than that?
Instead of wording it, if you're considering pulling the whole town, instead of wording it, should the Select Board draft an ordinance, which would open up a whole other can of processed worms. How are we gonna enforce that in that draft?
It, it will open all of those cans of worms.
Instead of wording it for the Select Board to draft, I mean, would we just, plain and simple, if you're considering pulling the town just to say, do you believe there is a noise problem in Brandon? I'm not saying I'm for pulling all the town for it. Because if you put, if you put, do you think the Select Board should adopt a noise ordinance? That's giving me the impression that
You're going to.
We're going to. And if we don't, then we're gonna have a whole other mess on, on the table again.
And in fact, it seems like most of the people who participated didn't want a noise ordinance. And so all you would do is confirm that.
So I, I like, do you think there's a noise ordinance? Do you think there's a noise problem in Brandon? I like that less than my question. Because if you ask that question, you will get an answer, and then you will still not have a course of action that's determined upon by the people.
So if I'm gonna want to, I'm gonna make an action to keep it off the ballot, not put it on the ballot.
Was there a hand up earlier, though?
No, no, I was stretching.
Is there, is there, is there a conversation to be had on the, on that motion? So there's an actual motion to not ask a noise ordinance question on the ballot? Any discussion from the board? Any public input? Neil?
Is there the possibility of looking at other municipalities' noise ordinances? And see if there's anything that at all resonates with the Select Board?
We've already done that. So we spent, we spent an extensive amount of, I will say, not just time, but effort, and not just time and effort, but emotional cost last spring. Finding out what was going on in other towns of our size in Vermont, finding out what was going on in other people's minds in terms of, like, noise research from universities in the United States. I mean, we did some stuff. I mean, we did some stuff. And again, I don't think any of those things would be something that you would ask the voters of the whole town, anyway, to win.
You know, and I keep on getting stuck with this. It seems to me that so much of the discussion at the last meetings was about Second Amendment rights. You can't have a noise ordinance, because it would take away my Second Amendment rights. And I think that we got bogged down in that, rather than looking at noise, at the issue of noise.
Well, I don't want to have that discussion again right now. But I understand what you're saying. It was a component of the discussion, but it was not the preponderant component of the discussion, in my view, and it was not the determinative one, in my view.
You attended more meetings than I did, so...
I attended every damn one. Bill?
You know, and again, you know, as modern, I, you know, I feel like we're just maybe sort of starting to heal from that conversation, where things got on either side pretty heated, and moving to Second Amendment rights, and quality of life issues around people, and threatened. And I feel like we've just got to the point where we're starting to heal, maybe, again in this town. Maybe I'm not. Maybe there's people out there that are still injured or hurt by this. And again, as somebody who, I'm not a big fan of loud exhausts driving through town, and I hear them as I live right in the middle of town, but I feel like at the point at which we put this on the ballot again, this is just going to open the wounds back up and allow for a conversation to happen that may end up with the same exact result as we ended up with before. And I just, I just don't see the, how that's moving anything forward.
I would like to follow up on something that Dave said a few minutes ago, and I think Jan will do too. I was very, my mind on this, on the idea of community engagement, has evolved a little bit in the last year. And the episode during which it evolved the most was when I was a little bit at odds with the town manager about how we, how the town was going to conduct the search for the new police chief. And I was pretty insistent, and maybe dug in a little bit with Dave about Dave, we've got to have some public input on this police chief search kind of thing. And eventually, we did come to a point where we agreed on a process for doing that, and we reached out in the newspaper, in Front Porch Forum, and I think also on the Town Clerk's Facebook page, I think it came. And we got a grand, grand total of two comments. Both of them were valuable, but not directive. Like, one was, I hope you get someone of the same character of our present police chief, I hope you get someone with integrity. That was solid. And the other comment was, I hope you get someone with an interest and experience in restorative justice. And Brandon has a restorative justice program, and all the candidates that David interviewed had experience with and awareness of, and, you know, that saw value in restorative justice. So where I kind of got to at the end of that process was what Dave just said, which is, they don't necessarily want to participate as much as I enjoy participating in the mechanics of government. They did kind of elect us to be the legislative body, that's what the select board's official title is, is the legislative body of the town of Brandon. And we, from time to time, benefit from hearings and other things where we learn public input, and we actively reach out and get a sense of the community. But in other situations, we need to just take the responsibility that they've elected us to carry out, which is to be the legislative body for the town. So I'm less committed to this idea. I am sometimes, people will call me, you know, a process guy, or a stickler for process, or whatever. And as far as process goes, I just, I do point out that in the minutes of the meeting, the board never said we were going to have a vote at the next town meeting. That was a misinterpretation that was unfortunately allowed to take hold in some parts of the community. The board voted to maintain the current course and rely on existing state statutes. That's all the board voted to do. So even though I proposed that as a non-binding advisory article, and now it's been proposed, or it's been moved to not go forward with that, I tend to agree that we should not go forward with that.
We'll only get a vote.
We will eventually take a vote. Last chance for public comment before we take the vote? Zoom comments? Board comments? Okay, if we're ready to vote, the motion that's before us is to not place an article on the ballot regarding advising the select board on a noise ordinance. On favor of not placing the article on the ballot, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed to not placing the article, say aye.
It'll be another four to one.
Opposed to not placing. Okay, so four to one again. All right, very cool. Any post-vote comments? All right. I'm hearing whispers to move on, I'll move on.
Charlene is getting paid by the word, to them.
Charlene, this will make up for the 17-minute meeting we had last time. Okay, so now we have item nine, to consider an ad hoc committee to explore ways to attract and retain employees. This was an agenda item that appears because an interested citizen made the suggestion, and he's here tonight. So Neil, Neil Silas, would you like to talk about what you envision here?
One of the things that struck me as part of, I think each and every one of the budget advisory committee meetings, was that, A, small towns are not able to keep up with the financial demands of hiring people and the level at which they want to be hired at in terms of salary. And there are a number of other, I'm not even sure what you'd call them, another, a number of other aspects of small towns hiring people that are the kind of people that we want to hire, that are going to do a good job, stay around, and become community members. Even if, as part of the current budget, we were able to come up with what everybody wanted in terms of salary, next year we'd have the same problem, the year after that we'd have the same problem in the ad nauseam. So I thought that, and this was especially influenced by the search for more police officers, that if we could figure out what would make Brandon, or does make Brandon, a good place to work, that we would have the beginning of a process to attract and retain the kind of people that we want, without having to constantly raise our budget, increase our budget. So what I'm thinking about, and I kind of started this informally just after one of the budget meetings, I was in Burlington, and a police officer came up to Best Bar, where I was standing, and he said, do you have a minute? What would attract you to a town? And he told me. And it wasn't a huge list, two things that we couldn't do, and one that we might. If we sit down and talk with the police chief, with police officers regarding the police department, we might be able to come up with something. And again, I'm not looking at high-dollar inputs, I'm looking at welcoming people to the community. So I thought that if we could get together a small group of people to decide on a plan to study that, who should we talk to? What kind of recommendations should we make? Are they feasible? It might set us up to be more successful in the future.
Dave, you're the chief hiring officer, and you're the one most in tune with our current staffing levels in various departments and so forth. Do you have just thoughts?
Sure. You know, I think, I think there's a couple of things there that I got out of what Neil just said. One is, you know, the only department that we have had some issues with is PD, which has, I think, turned into a nationwide problem now. You know, we've, we've done a great job with, like, all of our other departments, with sort of keeping it local and getting some phenomenal people in the last few years, that I think are willing to stay here, because they've already had roots here, and they have families here, and, you know, they're raising their kids here. You know, I'm kind of feeling a little more, a little more positive with the police department, only because we have, actually, I got two more applicants that came in after, you know, the hiring process took place. So we had a total of five applicants for the chief of police, and as Bill Moore said earlier, you know, there are towns still looking for a chief. I think that tells something that we're doing something right in Brandon, if, you know, we've been able to attract some people from out of town to come work for us. So, you know, there's always a bit of underliar with money, which totally makes sense. We're never going to compete with, you know, Burlington, or South Burlington, or, you know, Middlebury even for that sometimes. But I think we are kind of on the path, and, you know, now that we're going through this rebuilding process, you know, we'll see what our new chief looks at recruits. I mean, he's already talking about maybe having a school resource officer that he knows that will be able to come in. He's got a couple of leads on a lieutenant position, so I think, I think it's going to be kind of a brand-new, not a brand-new, you know, just a new start, and see where we go with that. But, you know, another thing that's kind of hurting us with the police department especially right now, is that, you know, there's this thing, and I'm going to look at Butch with disqualified immunity, that there's some people in Montclair that want to take that away. That's, that's a huge problem. So, you know, we'll see how that plays out, because that could easily, you know, make people say, well, I don't want to be a police officer now. So, you know, those are the things that are out of our control, which is unfortunate, but I think we're, I think time will tell with this one, and see where we start with, you know, with a new chief, and go from there. But I mean, as far as other departments, we're pretty good. We've had some, you know, some retainage with employees, like, I mean, the last person I hired in the town office was the year I started this town manager, so that was seven years ago, and they're still here. Our highways had turnover here and there, but we've always had someone else to pick it up, so, you know, that's been really good. Yeah, I think we're on a good track right now.
Okay. First off, I was not implying in any way that we're not on a good track.
No.
I just, I heard several times about problems with new officers. And then I heard that for the highway department, or Public Works, that a lot of the heavy machine operators are retiring, and there's nobody to take their place, or there's nobody that we can attract to take their place, one or the other.
Fortunately, we have one, two, three, four, four guys that are all younger than Bill Moore, because he's younger than me, so all you said was that, which, you know, we were able to grow with that one. But I guess, you know, I'm sure Mike can tell you too, that there was this huge retirement, you know, of equipment operators, and there are just not people to take their place. So there was something else you just said, and I had an answer for it, and I can't remember what it was you said, so. I don't know what I liked on that one, sorry about that.
Neil, you said there, when you spoke to the officer, what were the, what were the three things that...
One was advancement.
That's good.
Advancement.
Yep.
He wanted to know that he could increase in rank. One was money, and the third one was a sense of community.
Yep.
And to me, that was the one that spoke most to me. And this was for anybody who doesn't know, I'm from Chicago, and I had, I had many thoughts about policing in Chicago, and it always seemed to me that when we got police officers off the streets and into cars, that we put a barrier between the police and the policed, and we broke down the kind of historical policing relationship that worked well. So one of my thoughts regarding this was to have, oh, and the other thing was that I, and I've had some non-confrontational interactions with Brandon police, and I didn't know them. They're a town of, what, 3,000, 3,500?
4,000.
4,162.
Okay. We should, we should have a closer relationship with our police department, I think.
I think that it will, it will harden you to learn, which I think is probably what Dave's about to say, that that was a big topic of all the interviews that I sat in on, and I was, and my sitting in with the police chief candidates was not the only time that Dave spent with them. He spent time with, I think, each of them before he let me come in and talk to them. And that idea of, like, enmeshing the police as members of the community with the community, and being able to know them and recognize them, and them to know and recognize us, that was really a paramount kind of discussion with all of the candidates.
Yeah, and that is, well, that was not where I was going to go with that, but the one thing I wanted, that I just remembered, was that, you know, one of the big reasons that we've had a hard time, especially with me, again, with retaining officers, is people just don't want to be police officers anymore. Former chief Patel and I went through this a couple months ago, that, you know, out of the folks that had been here in the last five years, or seven years, or whatever, they actually got out of the police, you know, profession altogether. It wasn't that, you know, someone was kind of stealing them, they were just like, man, this isn't for me. So, and as far as advancement, there is opportunity to advance within our department, you know, they could be corporal sergeants, attendants, whatever. So, but, and, you know, not that I don't, I don't want to sound like I'm being defensive or anything, I'm just like looking at, you know, where we're at with, with our, since you've been in town, you know, our department has been small, we've had, you know, now we have three officers on right now, so their time is pretty limited with even what they're doing, and, you know, with even getting out. And we don't want to burn them out for the next couple of weeks either. So we have, you know, like I said, our chief's starting tomorrow, so we'll get, and he's very much on getting out in the public, and actually, Bill's had lots of meetings with him too. So that's, that's going to be great, we'll see him. And we've got two more guys coming out of Academy in March, so you will start seeing more people, or more officers out and about. But that's good to know, though, you know, we can certainly make sure that that's part of their daily routine. I know that, I know, actually, Michael and Aiden have been walking around downtown, sort of checking doors and things like that, so, but, you know, that's something we can certainly make sure we strive on, building the department right now.
Okay. Do you feel like, Dave, that the town is still a desirable employer when we do have a vacancy? Like, do you feel like, or even when we don't have a vacancy? Do you feel like if we posted a vacancy, we would be likely to get quality candidates based on our reputation as an employer? Or do you believe our reputation as an employer is lacking in some way?
Well, it seems like, we'll go back to the, just the chief position, you know, that we have quite a few solid candidates. So obviously, something was a drop for Brandon. You know, our downfall is, and I've said it before, not many houses are sold for anybody to move to town. You know, that's, unless you want to spend $400,000 right now. So that's, that's kind of a big problem for Brandon right now. It'd be great if we could bring more people in and have them live here, but we're only going to live, so. Yeah, I think we have become a pretty desirable place to work. You know, again, like, folks are staying on in all the other departments, so that's a big thing. I mean, there's a lot of turnover in municipalities, and we've been pretty, I'm lucky for seven years.
Other comments? Other ideas? Not sure what to do with the suggestion. I feel like, I'm not sure, not sure I'm seeing the need for a committee.
I actually am not, after that conversation, I think, because it's pretty well doing what I was saying.
I'm always open for suggestions for incentives, though, you know, like, I mean...
That is true. And we talk about that, and we've talked about that in the budget workshops and so forth, and Dave talks about it sometimes when we're in union contract negotiations with a couple of employees' unions, and the board has talked about it in updating the personnel policy from time to time. We've talked about what are some other incentives, or, and I talked about it at the floor of town meeting two years ago, that we were going to have to shift from rebuilding departments to retaining employees, because we now have a lot of quality employees that we want to express our consideration toward, but also keep... but also keeping in mind that the taxpayers are not in unlimited pocket.
We have a very professional staff all around, it's great, you know, it really is. Skilled people, knowledgeable people, friendly. Nobody really flies off the handle much, except, you know, Bill and I at each other.
I have to say, I have never had a negative experience with any town employees.
That's great, it's good to hear.
Let me tell you some stories about me and Dave.
That's one of the Zoom cameras.
I just, the sole point in my bringing it up and making the recommendation or asking the question was that we could look for non-financial ways that we might attract people.
I'm still open for suggestions on that, so if you got anything, certainly, let's get together.
Okay.
Thank you for raising it, Neil, and for the contribution. How about personnel policy, speaking of personnel policy? Like, there's some other stuff that the town does, this actually does cost us money, but these are non-wage components of the employee compensation. And Dave, you've got this addendum here, you want to just tell us why we have the addendum?
Absolutely. So when we did the personnel policy back, I don't know, what, two, three years ago now, we decided to make some things as addendums so we could change them as they were changing. And this is the one on the insurance, health insurance, and, you know, the VENIS type thing with vision dental buyouts and all that. So Jackie updates that every year, and that's why we have it, so we can just have the current.
So this is, we do it this way now, so that we don't have to read, we don't have to amend the whole personnel policy every year when the rates change and things like that. And maybe it is a good opportunity to just highlight for the public who maybe aren't super in tune with what the town personnel policy is. So this would be for not only employees in a collective bargaining labor union, but for all of the town's employees who are receiving benefits because they work more than the required number of hours per week. So the town pays 85% of the gold plan of health insurance. Employees can choose any plan available through the provider, but the cost, the additional cost we pay by the employee if they want something more than gold, which does exist in the health insurance world. We have a health reimbursement account that the town deposits money towards co-pays, deductibles, and other out-of-pocket expenses. This is in the $1,200 range per single employee and up to $2,500 per an employee with a family plan. The town, if you have insurance coverage from another source, if an employee is insured through another source, you can opt out of the insurance, and the town will reimburse you with what's called the health insurance buyout. 100% of the dental insurance is paid for by the town. And 100%, there's a vision service plan available that is paid by the employee. So those are the benefits that get adjusted each year. So what's the pleasure of the board on addendum C updating the numbers in the fringe benefits page of the personnel policy?
Motion to, I think, to, I think, that's the end, or second.
Motion from Mr. Wyman and a second from Mr. Markowski to adopt the updated addendum C that Jackie has prepared for this year's figures. Any discussion? Public comment? All in favor of adopting, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no, unanimous, you guys have it. Item 10A, the Department of Fish and Wildlife sent us a letter, which we received just this very day. I'm gonna read you most of it here, just so that it's clear, and I'll, I'll give it to Charlene. So this is from Joan Allen, she's a conservation consultant. On behalf of the Department of Fish and Wildlife, say your mind. She's looking for our support for the Department of Fish and Wildlife to acquire 116.3 acres in Brandon, and this is a swamp plot. It has been restored and permanently conserved with USDA a number of years ago. It'll be added to the Brandon Swamp Wildlife Management Area. In addition to further protecting its ecological values, this will ensure permanent public access for fishing, hunting, wildlife viewing, and other activities, that the parcel has no development or agricultural potential. The land is owned by Paul and Frances Stone of Orwell. On Town Tax Map Number Six, it is Parcel 02-11. And in line with earlier acquisitions, the property will remain on the town's tax roll with the state making a payment in lieu of taxes equal to the municipal tax. So she closes with, it's the state's longstanding policy to ask Select Boards to indicate their support for these acquisitions, and she would appreciate receiving a brief letter confirming the board's support. And offers to attend a meeting if we would like to have her attend a meeting. What's the pleasure of the board?
I think the motion that we give her her letter of support to allow her to purchase the land from the landlord.
Is there a second?
All second.
There's a second. There's a discussion. So the last time we did this, we made a statement in the minutes, and the town manager, I think, wrote a letter directing her to the minutes. Does that sound right?
I'll have to look it up, that sounds somewhat.
Yep, with something like that, we would.
Some kind of letter.
I mean, that's in line with what we're doing here. We're not opposing, we have no opposition.
Right.
Yeah, okay, so, any objection? So, does the motion go to, well, we would be indicating the support, which is what she's actually asking. Any further discussion? So Dave, can you do it the same way we did it last time?
Yeah, I mean, this is what I'm taking in, but if we do it in 10 minutes, I can do a letter too.
Okay.
And just, I'll just email it over.
Okay, so all in favor of making a statement that we do not oppose the acquisition of Fish and Wildlife of the parcel, question? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, say no, you guys have it? Charlene, there's the details. That didn't, that didn't come by email, did it?
That came.
Only paper. Yeah, just for US mail, okay. Usually we get something by email at the same time. Item 11 is a request for the use of local option tax funds from the town treasurer, asking us to approve a transfer of $123,900 from the local options tax fund for the purchase of highway equipment, namely the backhoe. It will recur, it will occur retroactive to month ending 12/31/2021. So we've already voted to procure this backhoe using local option tax funds, and apparently, we need to just actually make an account transfer to complete this process.
Yeah, Sue just wants to have a record of it, so, you know, it's more for just account or bookkeeping purposes.
Okay, all in favor of approving the transfer to, in support of the purchase that we voted on several weeks ago? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no, unanimous? Perfect.
I think next time, we'll just try to have that.
At the same time?
Yeah.
Yep.
Then it's over and done with.
It's perfect. How about item 12, there's a warrant, $120,640 and a penny. Dave, what's the penny for?
Local option tax.
Local option tax. What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion for, settle.
Motion for Mr. Wyman and a second from Mr. Markowski. Are there any questions on any of the bills on this warrant? None heard. All in favor of approval of the warrant, then, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, say no, you guys have it? So it's 8:40, and we'll have the board at recess.